I'm pleased to welcome committee members and guests to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, iPad, laptop, iPhone, to access the agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are also copies up here, if you need, of the agenda and supporting documents on the table, if you don't have the paperless access at this time. Today's meeting has seven action items and one information item before the committee. The first action item is approval of meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of the April 6th, 2015 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? This very controversial topic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. Our second is approval of the revisions to Article 16 CUNY Board of Trustees bylaws. Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer, who is not here yet.
Looks like I'll be doing it.
Are you, are you, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, good.
Great.
And Vice Chancellor Sanchez will now provide an overview of the revisions.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, effective July 1st, 2014, the New York State adopted the Not-for-Profit Revitalization Act of 2013, NPRA, an act that amends the not-for-profit corporations law. On September 29th, 2014, the Board approved a resolution permitting CUNY's college associations and auxiliary enterprise corporations to make necessary changes to their bylaws in order to meet requirements under the NPRA. One requirement of NPRA in that certain types of nonprofits, including CUNY's college associations and auxiliary enterprise corporations, have an audit committee comprised of independent directors. Article 16 of the Board's bylaws mandates the composition of the boards of the college associations and auxiliary enterprise corporations. Under the current composition, the only independent directors, as that term is defined in the NPRA, are students. The audit committee has significant responsibility regarding the corporation's annual financial audit and also has the authority to bind the board. In order to, in order to avoid having an audit committee composed solely of students, this resolution amends Article 16 to include two independent directors on the college association auxiliary enterprise corporations' boards. These two directors, along with one student director, should comprise the audit committee. In order to maintain the proportionate representation of students on the boards of the college associations, the number of administrative and faculty representatives serving on the college association boards have been reduced. The resolution also changes all references in Article 16 to the auxiliary enterprise boards to the auxiliary enterprises corporations, which is a more accurate description. It also deletes the Article 16 requirements that an auxiliary enterprise corporation have a budget and contract committee to develop all contract and budget allocation proposals for review and approved by the corporation's board, because it adds an unnecessary administrative step to the budget and contracting process. This is action item B.
Thank you. So is putting our bylaws in compliance with the most recent revisions.
Yes. This, and this was an information item, I believe, at our last meeting, and there's a considerable amount of discussion, both by students and faculty. And I believe Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer did some follow-up to conversation in order to get to this resolution.
Thank you. May I have a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Just like to note that the, in contrast to the version that was presented to us last time in Section 16.5b, Number 1, Roman Number 3, there will be up to two faculty alternates appointed to the panel by the President.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved. Thank you. Our next item is approval of the CUNY Residence Hall disciplinary procedures. Vice Chancellor Sanchez will provide a review of the disciplinary procedures.
Great, thank you. The City University of New York has recently introduced residence life options at a number of colleges, including the Towers, City College, the Summit at Queens College, Dolphin Cove at the, at the College of Staten Island. Lehman College is also serving as the manager of a building that serves as residence halls for its students. In addition, Hunter's College Brookdale Residence Hall has been in operation for a number of years. Those residential communities have become an integral part of CUNY's mission by fostering growth and responsibility among our students. In 2009, CUNY adopted disciplinary procedures to ensure that all students who live in the residence hall, halls behave lawfully and responsibly. A working group of residence-like professionals was consulted to review those procedures and to suggest changes reflective of their experience in operating under those procedures for the past five years. The amendments proposed are the result of the group's recommendations.
Thank you. May I have a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
The only additional input I'd provide is really the, these new disciplinary procedures align with Title IX. We need to make sure the residence hall staff and the RAs follow the procedures and protocol when particular issues arise in the residence halls. And so much of the new language is in alignment with the new, with the new Title IX requirements.
And if I may ask, the procedures themselves are, are limited to the students and don't involve staff, per se, or, or security personnel?
These disciplinary, these residence hall disciplinary procedures do involve, involve some staff, because typically you'll have an RA will not do the disciplinary hearing, it will be the hall staff there.
Exactly, okay, great.
But we need the RA staff, the student paraprofessionals, to develop a report accordingly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. Okay, next we have approval of the Queensborough Community College Student Activity Fee Increase. Vice Chancellor Sanchez will provide a review of the student activity fee increase.
Great. The proposed student activity fee schedules represent an increase of $8.85 in the full-time fee, $4.03 in the part-time fee, and $2.38 in the summer session student activities fee. The fee increases will fund student government, tutoring services, athletics, and recreation, and the cultural council at Queensborough Community College. A referendum was held in accordance with University Bylaw 16.12, was held in conjunction with the student government elections held in April, on March 26th through April 1st, 2015. The vote on the referendum was 560 in favor and 557 opposed, with an 8.1% of eligible students voting on the referendum. The last increase in the student activities fee at Queensborough Community College was in 2008. The proposed cha, the proposed changes in the student activity fee would increase areas that have not been increased in a substantial amount of time. For example, the athletics and cultural council earmarkings have not been increased since 1990. The tutorial services and student government earmarkings were last increased in 1998. The college president supports the referendum, because although the vote count was very close in this case, in fact, difference of three students, the turnout was higher than in most past elections, and the increases are going to areas that will improve student services and activities. Local earmarkings at the college have been established and are subject to change at the college in accordance with the referendum passes, process set forth in University Bylaw Section 16.12, provided there is no change in the total fee. Earmarkings set forth in the resolution may only be changed by further board action. I think Michael Hodge is here, Michelle Hodge is here, Vice President of Student Affairs at the college, to answer any questions the committee might have at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Any discussion or questions?
Just for Vice President Hodge, I do have a question.
Would you like to join us up here?
I have a student who works with them, does ever want to.
Please, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. So my question is, is this increase sufficient to bring student services of the kind supported by this increase up to the level that they were when the student fees were last reset, which is some time ago?
Well, actually, we've, we're gonna be expanding with this. We've basically held it level for this time. The enrollment has gone up over time, and so we have actually been able to maintain. But we have things like, for instance, the Tutoring Center uses models for the anatomy and physiology courses, and those models are quite expensive, and the more students we have in the program, the more models we need. So those kind of things are gonna be helped tremendously with, with this. And then on the athletic side, the same thing. Uniforms will be replenished and refreshed more frequently, and we have a refresh rate that's a little lower than the rest of our colleagues in, in our league. So your, it's your opinion that this increase is sufficient? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for helping us today.
Thank you.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is approval of the Brooklyn College Student Activity Fee Increase, College of Liberal Arts and Sciences Day Session. And Vice Chancellor Sanchez will provide a view of the student activity fee increase.
Thank you. This student activity fee schedule represents a dollar increase in the student activity fee to establish a new earmarking for the global brigade, medical brigades, our GMB. GMB is an organization that funds Brooklyn College student travel in developing nations each year to provide medical, dental, and environmental sustainability brigades. It aims to empower student volunteers to address medical, public health issues, environmental disparities in the developing world by leading brigades to developing countries. Participants will be subject to the CUNY travel guidelines. Referendum was held in conjunction with the student government elections held April 20th through the 22nd of this year. The vote on the referendum was nine hun, or 395 in favor and 182 opposed, with 5% of eligible students voting. The college president supports the referendum, because she believes it will support important co-curricular experience for science, pre-med, BA and MD, to MD students at the college. This earmarking will enable more Brooklyn College students to have a hands-on opportunity to be engaged as a global citizen. Earmarkings to the allocating bodies as set forth in the schedules have been approved by the Board and may be, may only be changed by further board action. Local earmarkings at the college are also set forth above for each of the student activity fee schedules. The local earmarkings have been established and are subject to change at the college in accordance with the referendum process set forth in Board Bylaw Section 16.12, provided there is no change in the total fee. Earmarkings set forth in the resolution may only be changed by further board action. President Karen Gould is, is here, and Vice President Milga Morales, and Dean Ronald Jackson to answer any questions the Board members might have.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Well, I have, I may have missed this in your, in your presentation, Vice Chancellor. What is, what is the actual fee?
It's a, it's a dollar per student, to the student activity fee.
Okay. So a dollar per semester, a dollar a year?
Per semester.
Per semester.
Dollar increase.
A dollar increase, okay. And I'm just curious to find out, by own notification, how many student volunteers do you actually have participating, let's say semester to semester, in the global medical brigade that would actually take part in the usage of these total fees?
Vice President, would you like to join us?
Forty students.
Welcome.
Forty students are actually, actually participate, per brigade.
And that's per semester?
That would be per year.
Per year. Terrific. And what's, so what's the total amount that's expected to be, to be garnered?
Well, I don't know, I don't know the exact amount, but it would be a dollar per semester each, so our students would, in the CLAS, this would be, the students would actually be paying, I guess it's 13,000, did we say? Per semester. So each semester, the students would be charged a, a dollar.
Okay.
So it doesn't actually, you know, complete everything that they need. The students will still be doing some fundraising in order to get to where they want to go. These are basically Latin, Latin American countries that they'll be participating and doing their service, so they will still be generating some fundraising on their own.
Sounds like a wonderful program.
It is.
Congratulations on, on that. And I hope, I hope the students who go are sort of a diverse mix as well.
Oh, absolutely. They're very, very, very diverse, from different backgrounds as well. Some of them are pre-med, but then there are also, also other backgrounds as well, because they do have programs which allow them to use even architectural skills, finance skills, all diversity of skills as well.
Terrific.
And I would just like to add.
Please join us, President.
That, you know, I thought long and hard about this one, but this is.
It is a little unusual, that's the way I am.
Well, it is. It's been ongoing, and the students are amazing, and what they do is amazing, but they also take their hat and go around the campus, because they just can't scrape the money together in an easy way. But this is a perfect example of what Governor Cuomo would like to see in experiential learning. This is a showcase for experiential, experiential learning with impact in communities that are hugely innate, so it's a win-win for everybody.
Terrific. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you. Our next item is approval of the CUNY School of Law establishment of a part-time student activity fee. And Vice Chancellor Sanchez will provide a review of the student activity fee for the law school.
Yes. An inaugural part-time class will commence at the School of Law in Fall 2015, and a part-time student activity fee of $21.45 per semester will be instituted. In order to offer part-time students extracurricular and other student services, the dean of the law school is proposing this fee for there to be a viable program in place when part-time students arrive. This proposal is shared with the current student leadership. This fee is essentially a prorated version of the full-time student activity fee. Any subsequent changes will require a referendum by the student body. Jean Zorn, Director of Administrative Services, is here to answer any additional questions to the committee, that the committee may have at this time. Please.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? I have one. What is the, the amount of the fee?
Professor Zorn, Director of Administrative Services.
Well, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Our full-time fee is $40, well, including student senate, 41.45 per student, and the part-time fee we're proposing is exactly half that, well, half the 40 plus the dollar 45, so 21.45.
And does that go through the same voting as the other schools did?
It normally should, and when we first had a student activities fee and then raised it, oh, about eight, nine years ago, we did have a referendum, and our thought is that because we don't have a part-time program with part-time students yet, that we would put this through now, and then we would either have a referendum of them at some point next year, when they're here, or depending on what the Board of Trustees proposes and suggests and wants us to do, we could just go ahead with this and have a referendum if we ever change it.
There's, please. I was, I was just gonna add, it's, it's been a common practice, certainly the years that I've, I've been here, that whenever there's inaugural fee, like a startup fee, the School of Journalism at a similar instance, where they needed to institute a fee to get it started, and then students, in order to increase it, could, you know, would do a referendum after the fact. It's just for administrative purposes, and oft, in many cases, we've had schools that should have had a fee in place, but it just wasn't in place, and so they administratively put it in there, and then, and then going forward, students can vote on it.
Do you envisage that most part-time students will carry half a load, as suggested by the fact that it's half the fee?
It is, but in fact, in law schools, students, part-time students carry more like three-quarters of the load.
So they're getting a bargain?
They're getting a bargain.
Good question. In regards to the students, was it brought to their attention in regards to what's being done, and was the student input?
You mean to, of our current students?
Correct.
Yes, it was shared with our student leadership, our student government.
So just the student government, and do you know if the student government reached out to the rest of the population in regards to what's going on?
I don't know.
Did they love it? Did they hate it?
I think they were massively disinterested.
Didn't care. Well, it was a nice day for the students.
It's them, not us.
Well said, very well said.
One more question. So if this committee did not do anything, would the part-time students you see coming into the school, would they otherwise bear the full-time fee?
I have no idea.
I would think the answer would have to be yes, depending on how that, how that reads. It's a very good question.
And, and if they're carrying more than half the load, would it, would it not even be better if we did nothing?
Are, are you suggesting that we should have a three-quarter fee for them?
No, well, it's a small, it's not a huge amount, but.
Right.
But it's, it's.
I think not, because part-time students, by definition, although we are, we as a law school are required by the, our accrediting body, the ABA, to provide the same level of activities for our part, for our evening students, our part-time program that we do for our day program. So we're gonna be shifting a lot of activities that used to take place earlier in the day. We're gonna be shifting them to later in the day, so that both full-time and part-time students will have access to them. At the same time, part-time law students, they work full-time, most of them have families, they are carrying a very heavy load at the law school. I don't think it would be fair to expect that they're going to spend even three-quarters of the time that day students do, partaking of extracurricular activities.
Nice question. Do we know what Brooklyn Law, Fordham Law, or New York Law does to the, the student activity fee for their part-time students?
They have a totally different structure, because they're private. So I, I can't really answer exactly what the differences are, because it's different among all of the different schools. Some of them get a lot more money from outside than others do.
I guess, Mike, let me phrase it another way. Do the other schools in New York that have part-time programs give a, give a prorated or, or a different amount for part-time?
Yeah, but it varies.
By school or by student?
By school.
By school. But as a general proposition, they do not charge a full-time student fee to part-time students. That's the, that's, that's.
Yeah.
That's the norm in, in the law school world. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Our next item is approval of the College of Staten Island Student Activity Fee Increase. Vice Chancellor Sanchez will provide a review of the student activity fee increase.
This student activity fee schedule represents an increase of $40 in the full-time and part-time student activity fees, and a $10 per summer session student activity fee to be earmarked for a transportation fee. A student activity fee referendum was held in accordance with University Bylaw Section 16.12, in conjunction with the student government elections held April 21st through the 28th of this year. The vote on the referendum was 803 in favor and 273 opposed, with an 8% of eligible students voting. The President, President Fritz supports this fee increase, which will allow for the continuation of the shuttle bus service by offsetting some of the escalating, I should say, significant escalating operating costs. Currently, the college provides three bus services that cost $1.6 million, with costs increasing approximately 3% to 5% each year. The express ferry shuttle bus service operates between Staten Island Ferry Terminal and the Center for the Art Transporting, over 2,750 riders, Monday through Friday, reducing the commute to the campus by 35 minutes. The loop shuttle carries 1,500 riders from the college's main entrance on Victory Boulevard onto the campus, and around the three-mile loop road, stopping at six strategically-placed bus stops on the 204-acre campus. The disability services bus provides an on-call transportation for those members of the college community in dealing with challenges. The three-bus ferry shuttle operates during the fall and spring semesters, leaving each terminal every 20 minutes, and on modified weekday schedules during the winter and summer sessions. The two-bus loop shuttle operates continuously throughout the day, seven days a week, when classes are in session. The shuttle bus program has been successful in significantly reducing commuting time, as well as reducing the number of private vehicles coming to the campus daily. Faculty and staff who wish to utilize this transportation option will be charged $40 per semester and $10 per summer session. Earmarkings set forth in the resolution may only be changed by further board action. Vice President for Finance Administration, Ira Persky, is here, as well as the Vice President for Student Affairs, Ramona Brown, to answer any questions committee members may have at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Please.
When was the current fee established?
Please join us. Welcome, our friends from Staten Island.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll, I'll just say a couple of words, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Vice President Percy. The current service was established in two, late 2007, and it was, it was established, we had federal grants to support it as a pilot. When those grants ended after the first year, the college absorbed it into its budget, and we have been maintaining it, as was said by Vice Chancellor Sanchez, at a cost of about $1.6 million a year in our tax levy resources, which is really unsustainable in, in the current climate. The one thing about the service is, in addition to the commute times, has really opened up access to the north shore of Staten Island, which didn't have access to the college prior to this. If that didn't answer your question, Vice President Persky, I'm sure can, can jump in.
In the, in the original pilot that was, for the, for the ferry shuttle, it was anticipated that we would transport about 1,000 students a day. We're up to over 2,700, actually, Monday through Thursday, it averages out to better than 3,000 a day. So the program has been a tremendous success. It's also increased our catchment to the other boroughs, as it makes the, we have a number of students who, who come to see us, I, that don't live on campus from the Bronx, and it reduces their commuting time rather significantly, because it's, it's a bus to a train to a boat to a plane kind of thing, so.
Yes, indeed.
Train, planes, and automobiles.
So, you know, the, the express, the express service from the ferry terminal is, is excellent. The other thing is, public transportation on the island is not what it is, certainly in Manhattan, and the challenge is that all of our students. And, uh, the challenge is that all of our students, uh, encounter every day, even on the MTA buses, the major, uh, major bus that drops off at the front of the campus is the sixty-two bus, uh, and the, and the ninety-two, which is a limited, uh, service bus, and the X-ten Express from Manhattan. Uh, folks that get off there are then faced with the challenge of getting to the campus itself. Uh, and that, depending on where they're going, could be as much as a two-mile walk. Uh, and in the winter, it doesn't work, uh, so.
In the summer, it doesn't work either.
So, you know, uh, we were successful several years ago of getting the, uh, a modified express from Brooklyn, uh, the ninety-three bus, which now comes into the center of campus. Uh, but we don't see at any time in the future that the MTA would be doing that with the sixty-two, nor would it even satisfy the demand now that's on that route. Uh, it's, uh, so. It's also been, as, as the, as Vice Chancellor Sanchez mentioned, has re, uh, significantly reduced the number of cars on campus. As our enrollment has increased, the number of student-driven vehicles has actually been reduced, uh, which is, you know, extremely commendable from, from an environmental standpoint.
Maybe I should amplify my question, I, I, I'm glad you said all these things. Uh, but in addition, there are all these other items in the Student Activity Fee. Um, when were they set, the non-transportation items?
I think the last time there was an increase was two thousand and eleven, that was an athletic fee increase.
So that they are not being short-changed at this point? It's not that, they also need an increase?
Uh, we don't believe so.
You don't believe so, okay. That answers my question, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, in, in, in regards to what has just been said, the forty-dollar increase, will, the new, the buses that are currently, I know they are future accessible, because I spoke to a few students who, that are, you know, CCA, uh, students with disability, and they are excited that the current buses that are on, are, which are accessible. The new, would there be an additional buses, or would the forty dollars is just to maintain the current buses?
The, student government has been asking for expanding, expanded services, and, you know, we've explained to them, we're having enough difficulty being able to manage with the dollars that we have. Now that we have on-campus residents to, residents, the students are asking for increased services as well. That's something that will be considered, uh, but at this time, nothing is firmly planned.
Can I ask a question, I'm just following up on that. Are you asking about increased services, or are you, because?
Just one, right.
ADA accessibility, I wouldn't necessarily qualify as a increased service. It's what the law would mainly require.
The primary goal of this fee is to maintain service of the three shuttles at, at, at the current rate. At the current, at the current level, it will primarily support the ferry shuttle. You know, we, we're going to maintain the disability, the, the shuttle, no matter what.
Okay, good, 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 terrific. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great, the motion is approved, thank you. Uh, now we have, uh, information items and the Vice Chancellor's report. Please address the committee on the updates.
Sure, a, a number of updates to share with the committee. Uh, as some of you know, this past month, Chancellor Millican asked our office to coordinate, um, uh, relief efforts, uh, for our students and families in Nepal, and a number of things have happened, so I'll spend the first part of my report focusing on that. So on the May sixth, we've met, uh, we met with all the liaisons across the university from every campus to begin talking about the best ways to respond to this, uh, to this tragedy. I also participated in a White House teleconference with representatives from the Department of State, Department of Defense, the Pentagon, as well as USAID and other agencies. Uh, what came out of that meeting were a number of information items. One, um, you know, we provided now our students with resources, information about emergency student funds for students from Nepal, and we distributed that across, with all the liaisons. We also learned that students will be eligible, and keep in mind that many of these are F-one, uh, students, international students, and so there's certain requirements they have to meet in order to stay in the US and attend school. What we learned is that these students will be eligible, uh, for off-campus employment, which traditionally they're not, and reduce course loads. Um, uh, they should work with their international student advisor. Uh, we shared, uh, the United States, or US CIS immigration and relief measures for Nepali nationals, updating disaster relief, uh, website. We have a fairly comprehensive disaster relief website, and now it has quite a bit of resources and information and support services, uh, for students that were impacted. Uh, the committee and all the liaisons agreed that, since this was so close to the fi, uh, this final season, and now we're in commencement, uh, they recommended that we, uh, kind of push this information out, uh, and do fundraising for the remainder of the semester in through the summer, and maybe even in the beginning of the fall semester, work with student government to continue to do some of that work, uh, in fundraising. With regard to fundraising, uh, what we learned from the White House is that due to the infrastructure logistical issues, international relief agencies urged that, in fact, they, um, they urged that the most effective way people can assist relief efforts is by making cash contributions. In fact, they strongly discouraged, uh, gathering, uh, food or clothing or water, uh, because there's just limitations on the airstrip, uh, there in Nepal. Uh, consequently, CUNY's campaign will focus on fundraising and Weaver Scavenger Research Foundation account, uh, to receive donations from the campuses. And we're gonna, uh, donate, uh, to a better humanitarian relief, uh, agency. In fact, uh, I'm happy to say that Manfred Philip joined us for this meeting, as he was, uh, former Fulbright in Nepal, and, uh, gave us some great information and data and context as to that country. We'll be working with, uh, Dr. Philip on identifying an, an agency that works closely with the government. Uh, in terms of the students, our, our students from Nepal, we have about a hundred and fifty, uh, F-one students from Nepal, and about a thousand students, uh, who claim, uh, to be of, um, uh, their heritage from Nepal. I've joined Ruth Kimona, our University Director of International and Scholar Services, uh, on a meeting Friday, May eighth, uh, to meet with these students. We had about twenty-five students who joined us. Uh, none of the students, thankfully, in attendance, had lost a family member, but most of them, uh, uh, their families had lost their homes, uh, and are displaced. Uh, we had a number of resource peo, people attend the meeting. Dr. David Dvar, out of our Health and Wellness Operations, spoke about managing stress from afar. And, uh, immigration attorney, Arda Viscardas, spoke about immigration relief measure for Nepali nationals. Uh, one of the real challenges and concerns that many of these students had is they lost their funding source. And so they are, uh, they're not sure, one, uh, after the break, whether or not they're gonna be able to go back home, but there's real, uh, concerns about going forward and being able to stay in school. Uh, uh, having a place to live, certainly even over the summer, if they can't go home, they're kind of, uh, stuck in some ways. And so we're trying to come up with as many resources of support for these students going forward. A lot of challenges associated with this, with this issue. And another, uh, update, we, uh, have been working to provide greater access for our, our students across CUNY to museums and cultural centers all throughout the city. On April thirtieth, at the Shelley and Donald Reuben Foundation, uh, there was, um, a full-day conference entitled Building a New York City Cultural Network. Attendees included national and local foundations, New York City cultural institutions, government agencies, and the CUNY administration faculty, the Commissioner on Cultural Affairs, Commissioner Finkelpearl, uh, as well as the, um, the head of the Reuben Foundation, joined us during that day. Not to mention Donald Reuben actually spent the afternoon with us to talk about how we can, in turn, you know, enhance the quality of the CUNY degree by providing greater access to these really world-class cultural centers throughout the city. And, um, the outcomes were to begin to try to identify some central support, where better coordination with faculty and with students with these cultural centers can begin. There's just so much, uh, so many resources out there that we're just not providing our students at this time, that, that we can start connecting the dots on. And so, uh, it was a very, very productive meeting. Uh, on the SEEK and CD front, retention and graduation data are in, and show tremendous improvement. Uh, it's important to note that SEEK and CD, unlike our Trio and ASAP programs, require students to have academic need in addition to economic need. In our college discovery, which is across all of our community colleges, uh, three-year associate graduation rates, there's been a twelve percent point increase, uh, or twelve percentage points higher by participants than regular admits. Uh, the net, the regular admits also include the ASAP participants system-wide. Uh, and it's higher at every campus, ranging from six to sixteen percentage points, again, in our, in our college discovery. In the SEEK program, six-year baccalaureate graduation rates over the last three years, the gap between regular admits, uh, which includes Macaulay, and SEEK has narrowed from ten percentage points to five percentage points. For regular admits, it's fifty-six point one percent. For SEEK students, it's fifty-one point three percent. Again, for six-year graduation rates, considering that these students are required to have both academic need and financial need, I think it, it says a lot about the, the impact of these programs. Uh, SEEK graduation rates are higher at five of our college over the last few years. Uh, Single Stop USA, as many of you know, we are, uh, we've been working to expand connection points between our poor students and public benefits. And I'm happy to announce that John Jay has recently received a grant for the Robin Hood Foundation to establish a Single Stop program at that four-year institution. Uh, until then, we've only had a single stop, stop, uh, programs at our community colleges, and this will be our first four-year institution. I'll also share with this body, I think, some very exciting news, just in the last two weeks.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So all of our community colleges have a, a Single Stop?
Yes. Uh, all, all of them have a, a Single Stop program, and this year, uh, we will connect our students with just over forty million dollars in additional benefits, resources, and counseling support. Uh, I was, I was just gonna say that, um, just in the last week, um, in talking with the Robin Hood Foundation, they're very, uh, interested in expanding to our four-year institutions. In fact, they have requested a proposal to do a significant, uh, expansion. And so this July, I'll be sending a proposal, uh, to that effect. And so, yeah, it's ve, very exciting.
Wonderful.
We, we, uh, we would estimate that if we could get half of our four-year institutions to implement Single Stop, we could generate about a hundred million dollars in additional, in reducing that pocket expense to our poor students to be able to attend college. So it's, uh, we're excited about the possibility. On the student life front, the University Student Senate, uh, sponsored a Culturally United CUNY on, uh, May first at Beirut, uh, two hundred students attended. They also, uh, held their CUNY Got Talent Competition, uh, which there's some really truly amazing, uh, brilliant students across our sys, system, uh, competing and sharing their talent. The Municipal Credit Union, um, sponsored it with over, um, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars in cash prizes to the, to the winners. And so congratulations to the University Student Senate for putting on these system-wide programs. Uh, our CUNY Blackmail Initiative participated in a White House conference that took part on a conference call on Thursday, April thirtieth, with senior advisor to the President, Valerie Jarrett, and Acting Assistant Attorney General for Civil Rights, Vanita Gupta, on the recent events in Baltimore. Uh, also, on Friday, May first, our CUNY BMI took part in a conference, uh, call hosted by the CBMA. Uh, this is a national network of, um, of, uh, pro, programs that support, uh, young men of color. This special teleconference, Baltimore Community Building Call Insights, uh, and perspectives from leaders responding to crisis and call for change, included a report back from local leadership and activists who are helping to organize and shape a more accurate narrative of what's going on in Baltimore. Career services, new partnerships with CUNY Careers Centers and the Bottomless Closet is established to provide our job-ready clients cost-free clothing, interview preparation, and other services. We also begun conversations with McDonald's Corporation here in the tri-state. They have over six hundred restaurants, and they have proposed a tuition assistance program for any of our students working at any one of their restaurants. And it could range from, uh, a five hundred dollar, uh, uh, financial support up to twelve hundred dollars, depending on their level coming in to work with, with McDonald's. But this, um, could provide our, our students with additional support. A, as high up, if you get up into, uh, upper leadership and management, there could be a fifty-two hundred dollar per year assistance in attending college. And so we're, um, developing an MOU, and hopefully something will come out of this through the support also with Ellen Dobrin and Jay Hirschensohn. And then CUNY, uh, has had this longstanding partnership with Columbia, and the, um, uh, scholarship, and up to fifteen thousand dollars will be offered to students participating in the Allied Health Clinical Internship, uh, residing in districts nine through twelve. Uh, on the Residence Life and Student Conduct front, uh, Residence Life Central Office hosted our second annual Residence Life, uh, Recognition Dinner on April twenty-third. And this is where we bring together all of our resident assistants who work with our students across our housing system and recognize them for their outstanding work throughout the years. Many of you know that those twenty-four-seven, uh, positions, uh, student leadership positions are some of our most difficult, uh, but I'll tell you, we have some of our most capable student leaders, I think, in the system, doing those, uh, difficult jobs, and we certainly want to recognize them every year. In childcare, on April twenty-third, the Childcare Council held its annual Student Parent Success, um, celebration. Uh, this event recognizes eighteen student parents, uh, one from each childcare center who has maintained an average of at least three point five and has contributed to the college community or to the childcare center. Services for students with disabilities, in partnership with CUNY's Director of City Relations, John Kautowski, the Central Office of Student Affairs has secured a hundred thousand dollars in city capital con, funding through the Bronx City Council member, James Vaca, to upgrade assistive technology labs at Bronx Community College and the Katz Lab at Queensborough Community College. Vaca, whose father was blind, uh, has a real passion for access technology and has, um, uh, has indicated that he would like to upgrade the labs of two of the community colleges each year for as long as he is seated. The mental health and wellness, again, not too much longer, but a couple more items here. Mental health and wellness, on Thursday, May seventh, uh, uh, from ten to four PM at the Borough Manhattan Community College, the Central Office of Student Affairs held its inaugural health symposium featuring keynote speaker, Dr. Neil Bora, from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Dr. Bora discussed the common, most common infectious diseases facing college students today. Uh, there were also two breakout sessions, emergency management for college campuses and vaccine-preventable diseases. Uh, Monday, May eighteenth.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Was, was mental illness or anything of that nature, or they were just talking about infectious diseases?
Yeah, they were just talking about infectious diseases, um, but certainly, uh, mental health certainly could be a topic for future, um, uh, health symposiums, no question.
Well, what I'd, what I'd like to propose, and it's something that I'd like to put on our agenda for next, as we're meeting in September, is the issue of mental health and, and our mental health services at, at the different campuses. Um, I know you work closely with them, and I'd like, I think it's, it should be part of sort of this committee's work in, in looking at those. Um, I had met many years ago, not, several years ago, with Ellen Dobrin, and we did a, just a spot check, and there were some schools that had levels like this, and we had some schools that had levels like that, and he was instrumental in really, and this may have even predated your tenure, in making sure that most of the schools, most of our campuses had sort of a consistent level of, of service. And I think it's important. Now that we have that, um, to kind of combine that with the, the mayor and the First Lady's wonderful programs that they're doing to, to destigmatize mental illness and how to bring that to our, to our students, I think that's really important.
Well, we certainly can plan, as part of my, uh, report in the September meeting, provide some detailed information about mental health,
Does that make sense?
Uh, from a services and programming side.
I just keep thinking so much about it, and it just keeps coming up, and, and students who don't want to go, they don't want to get services, they don't want to report, or when they do report, you know, the people in the campus counseling center know about it, and then they're sworn to secrecy, and they can't go forward, and because of the, the student doesn't want the stigma attached.
Addressing the issue could have an impact on student retention, which.
Say, say that again?
Addressing this would, could have an impact on student retention, aside from the other benefits.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I think there's a place here for CUNY to do real, uh, innovative work here.
Absolutely. The, the last item I have is, uh, on May eighteenth, we held a reception at Hunter. The, the last item I have is, uh, on May eighteenth, we held a reception at Hunter College to launch the latest edition of the Reciproccal Accommodations, a guide for, for faculty. Uh, this is an award-winning guide developed by, uh, COSD, which is our Council of Directors that oversee disability resources and services across the system. And it's been expanded to include our resources of, uh, designing courses in accordance with the principles of universal design and managing the behavior of now neurodiverse students, which includes a lot of our students who are along the autism spectrum. The reception was hosted by our Central Office and the University Faculty Senate Trustee. And, uh, Madam Chairperson, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, you mentioned about the Blackmail Initiative, uh, working with the CDC. Is that what it was, uh, NBC with the, along the conference call? Was that in relationship to the I Am a Brother's Keeper stuff? If not, do you know if there's been any, um, real, anything from that, that, um, initiative?
Yeah.
And if we are gonna be working with them?
That conference call was not part of the My Brothers Keepers, uh, announcement. However, we have had, uh, within the Chancellor, we have had a conversation about, uh, ways in which we should think about su, uh, supporting that initiative. And I had a great brainstorm, Jeremy Rye, Jay Hirschenson, and several others that came together, kind of thinking in a creative way, uh, how we can, um, uh, support that initiative. And so, uh, some more work will be coming out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
One, one item that I just, I know, I'm not gonna give it away anymore, it's longer, uh, but I, it was up considerable, no, and I don't have the salient details, and I should have brought them, but the, the incredible announcement around the Dreamers', uh, philanthropic gift that, uh, Chancellor Miliken was able to secure, and the philanthropist, his name is escaping me, um.
So it was, it was Donald Graham, and it was Bill Ackman. Uh, so I can share for, for, uh, members of committee. So, uh, several weeks ago now, uh, we're hosting an event to recognize all of our Dream dot U S recipients. Uh, the Dream dot U S organization was created just about a year and a half ago to provide scholarships for undocumented students, DACA-eligible undocumented students. And Chancellor Miliken charged, um, the university to, uh, promote broadly the, these, uh, scholarship opportunities. And so we became actually the leading university in the country in terms of the number of students receiving these scholarships. In fact, forty percent of all recipients nationally are, are, are from CUNY. And we were recognizing our students, and, and a parent, they could invite a parent. And at that, uh, event, at the Graduate Center, uh, Donald Graham, who created the organization, announced that he was planning to raise an additional fifteen million dollars, uh, for the Dream dot U S. And then right behind him, Bill Ackman came up, and he goes, well, I, you know, I like to be competitive, so I'm gonna match that with him to share fifteen million dollars. And so in a matter of about fifteen minutes, there was thirty million more dollars, uh, for the Dream dot U S. And, and while we will not be receiving, CUNY won't be receiving that money directly, forty to fifty percent of that money's gonna go to a CUNY student, because we're gonna continue to push this program and create, uh, incredible opportunities. A four-year scholarship, up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
We'll keep our committee apprised in terms of if there's any, maybe we'll make it a hundred based on. Yeah, I just had to come up with this real, this wonderful, I just wanted to share that.
That's very exciting.
For any of you that didn't hear that wonderful, wonderful news.
Thank you.
Um, I sat next to the Chancellor at a, uh, at a, at the Lehman commencement last week, um, and that's all he was talking about, and he made it sound like, almost like an auction. Oh, yeah, you got fifteen, I'll do thirty.
Yeah.
It just sounded very, sounded like a lot of fun, and it sounds like a lot of fun to have the kind of money to, to do it. Um, any other questions?
I just wanted to note, I was pleased to be at that meeting with, uh, about Nepal that you ran, and I thought it was, it was, it sounded like it was very productive. I had, I'm sorry, I had to leave, uh, early because I had a class to teach, though, shortly thereafter, but it, it sounded very, um, I thought, that the university's doing the right thing.
Thank you.
And so I'm happy that we're doing it.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?